Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Committee of the Whole of Monday, July the 19th. I wish to begin tonight's meeting by formally recognizing that we are meeting on the territory of the South Inshani Nations, and we are here today with gratitude. So, Council, we are in Committee of the Whole, so a reminder that no seconders required for motions, we'll be looking for just a mover, and then we'll go into a discussion of each particular item. So, our first order of business is Ministerial Order M192, this is item five in your agenda, and that is that the Committee of the Whole is holding this meeting without members of the public in attendance under Ministerial Order M192, as council chambers cannot safely accommodate the unknown number of public participants wishing to attend, and that the Committee of the Whole is committed to ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility, and accountability through the submission of written comments, and the provision of live and recorded broadcasts of the meeting. So, look for a motion, please, for this motion moved by Council St. Pierre, no seconders, I stated, any questions? See, none, all in favor, and that's unanimous, thank you. And so now we'll look for approval of tonight's agenda, so you'll see this agenda in front of you, and please also note that we have received correspondence here as well, which will be in your supplementary items. So, Council, look for approval of the agenda with the inclusion of supplementary, that's moved by Council Bateman. Any comments? See, none, all in favor, and that's unanimous, thank you. So that brings us right into our delegation section, and our first guest this evening, under item 7.1, is a presentation by Elizabeth Lang on behalf of the Climate Action Committee. So, Ms. Lang, thank you very much for being available to join in with us tonight, and I'll turn it over to you, thank you.
Thank you. Just pull up my screen here. Can you see that?
Not yet. Apparently it's loading up. We don't see it shared yet.
Oh, okay.
Next to the red leaf rectangle at the top right of your screen, there should be a white box with a black arrow pointing up. Yeah, that's it, thank you. And here it is, that's perfect, thank you very much.
Okay, sorry about that. So I have two tasks in joining you this evening. One is to just give you a little update on the Education and Engagement Working Group of the Climate Action Committee, and the second is to talk about what we would like our deliverable to be at the end of this year, and that is just for your information and for feedback purposes. So I'll just do a quick little review of what we've been up to, especially on the Engagement and Communication Group. Our purpose is to help communicate the realities around a changing climate, and I think the heat dome, the heat wave we just experienced, and past years of wildfires and smoke is just a preview, really, of what's to come. Joanna Macy considers there to be three main global stories, and that's the business-as-usual story, the global unraveling, all of those who are predicting what's going to be happening in terms of the climate, and we see the science reports on that every day, and the global turning, and this is a very hopeful story, that we can actually reduce the global emissions, and that we can really begin to prepare in very effective ways for the changes that are going to be coming. So our goal really is to replace this business-as-usual idea with a very exciting vision for SUK that really builds hope for and in the future, and helps to shift public perceptions toward a survivable and thrivable future. So we have two goals for our group, one is to develop the messaging around climate change, basically to engage SUK citizens in lowering emissions, and to prepare for this new climate reality. And the second goal is to offer recommendations to the district for actually implementing this communication and engagement plan over five years. So as I presented last time, these are the four phases of story design, and we've been having really quite an enjoyable time. You were proof, funding for hiring Denise Withers, who's a narrative coach, and she uses storytelling as a leading-edge communication method, and we have really enjoyed working with her, and I think it's been very educational and enlightening for all of us who have been participating. When we say story, what we're really meaning is the way we make sense of events we see occurring, and so every day we're storing different parts of our lives when we tell someone what happened to us, or how we make sense of all of the events that are happening around us. And so this method that she uses has four stories, the problem story, the big picture story, we need to solve, and then a success story, one future image for SUK that really speaks to the many and has a very compelling image of what we could look like as an emissions-free and resilient town and our future. And then the blocking stories, and I want to share some of those with you in just a few minutes. These are the current stories people tell themselves that stop them from making or adopting change. And then the change stories, and so what we're going to do, and we're just about to embark on this piece of the work, is designing and testing stories for specific audiences and to counter blocking stories, so that we can engage just as many people in SUK as we can. So we did 80 street interviews, which was after training, Denise gave us quite a bit of training on that, and we engaged people all over, from shopping centers to different, to the sea park, to parking lots, and so forth, and we got some very interesting information. And I thought you might be interested in hearing some of that tonight, and so this is a real reduction down of what the key ideas were, but what we heard is that, of course, electric cars, and heat pumps, and solar energy, of course, are too expensive for people to engage in. Climate change, another idea was that climate change does not impact me, or will not impact me, either because of their age, or just their views on what climate change is. The third thing we heard was taking action requires too big of a sacrifice, or it's too hard. Another one was figuring out what to do is just too much work, too much research, too hard, or too confusing. Another really important bit of feedback that we got was SUK does not have all we need, jobs, services, and shops, so people have to drive out of SUK to get what they need. And also they felt that transit is just not good enough at the moment. And then finally, saving energy doesn't make much of a difference in order to engage in it, and that one person's actions simply do not matter in the giant problem that we're facing. In the end, we calculated that about 10% of the people that we talked to really didn't have any idea about climate change, and they told us that, just in those words, and that the other insight that we came to is that most simply, they understand the basic environmental messages that we've been getting for 25, 30 years, but they could not name what specifically would address climate change, so we have quite a job in front of us. So after collecting all that data, we completed two vision workshops, and we're crafting a vision for a low-carbon resilience SUK, and we're going to be working on this actually on Thursday, and we hope eventually we'll be able to share that, what that master success story will look like. So what we're working on is finding all the arguments for heat pumps and for changing transportation modes, and so we're focusing on really strengthening the local community, our local economy, and pride in SUK. We're trying to focus on made-in-SUK solutions, and we're trying to redefine freedom, taken aback from all the advertisers. And finally, we're trying to encourage the notion of just be here in SUK. We live here, we love being here, so we should be here as much as we can. And then we're also trying to develop incentives for change, and finding the resources for the district to be able to work further on this. So we're in the story design phase right now, and we're creating several change stories that we can engage for different audiences. And then what we're going to do is test and finalize the master change story and the three stub stories, and then at the end, we're going to offer our recommendations to the district, and hopefully identify some resources for implementing this as a five-year plan. So that's the first half of my presentation. The second is on our Climate Action Committee 2021, and we have been talking for some time now on what our deliverable would be to Council, and we have decided that the thing that best compiles all of our work this year is a SUK Climate Action Plan Framework. So what we're talking about here is that we're proposing to design a table of contents for the plan, and I did provide just a working draft for you, it's of four pages of all the headline titles, and so what we're proposing to do is only complete the high priority areas of the plan that we believe Council needs to act on first. Also, in addition to that, there's two main parts to the plan, and the first part, of course, is mitigation, that reduces GHG emissions, and obviously is SUK's contribution to limiting the extent of global climate change. And then the other aspect is adaptation, to really build SUK's capacity to respond to the new climate realities. So we developed this graphic as a way to try to capture everything that will be in this report. If you look at all the blue boxes, those all pertain to mitigation, which is about lowering the 7% reduction of global greenhouse gases a year for a low-carbon SUK. So the only pieces of that report that we would fill out would be the two priority areas that we've identified, and that's buildings and infrastructure, and transportation and mobility. But there are many other pieces that would still need to be completed, and that is food and agriculture, their contribution to emissions, waste management, forests and other carbon sinks, and community energy generation. So those will be the pieces that we don't complete. The next half of the plan then is on adaptation for a healthy and resilient SUK, and again, you can see in the orange boxes, there's quite a few priorities, and this really builds from the B.C. Risk Assessment Report, and we're highlighting, at least at this point, four priorities. One is wildfire security, which has been designated as the top issue, top priority, and then water security, and I think we can see from the droughts that are happening, and changes in freshwater levels and so forth, that this is going to be a severe issue in the future, and also for food security. We see that there's drought across the prairies, drought in California, they're already pulling up almond trees, and many other foods that require heavy amounts of water. So food security is going to also be an issue in the future, and so we do need to prepare for that. And then finally, for energy security, that we aren't just connected to the main grid, that we do perhaps have some of our own ways to generate some energy here in SUK. But then there's other priorities as well that we would not address, heat resilience, extreme rain resilience, sea level rise protection, storm surge protection, and extreme wind resilience. So those would be left for the district to complete. And then if you look at the green boxes, you can see that there's two pieces, the darker green would be the ones that we're completing, so the engagement, communication, and education work. And we do have a working group on the climate justice and social equity, so looking at both mitigation and adaptation through a climate justice lens and a social equity lens. Those who are already suffering will continue to suffer more in these extreme circumstances, and so trying to mitigate that, of course, is absolutely critical. So just a little bit of detail, for instance, in the mitigation section, Anna is going to be presenting on this, and she is writing this section on the 7% solution, and for instance, her part of the report would include carbon accounting, some ideas around estimates and measuring, proposal for an inventory and monitoring emissions, and some priority cuts, which I've already described, and we have a working group on each of those. In the adaptation section of the framework, the staff actually has already crafted some text for the wildfire security aspect, so they're working with us on developing this section. That we have, we're looking for a potential working group, perhaps, with water security once we finish some of the other work that we're doing, and we already have a working group on food self-sufficiency, that they're already crafting some of the text around that. And then finally, energy security, which, again, we're thinking of putting together a potential working group on that before we're done this year. The other pieces of the plan that would be completed is the chair of our committee, Bernie, is working on writing the preface. We are going to hopefully put together a working group, a writing group, that will put together an executive summary and a statement of purpose, and as I said, we already have two working groups on the just transition and on the education plan. So the remainder of the plan that would be completed by staff, and if they would like, they can certainly have our ongoing support and assistance to ensure that there is coherence and that the outline is workable for them. And then what the district gains, so what you walk away with after a year of our work is a partially completed Climate Action Plan, which will include targets and measurement capability. It will have some identified priorities and recommendations for immediate action, so that we can begin doing the preparation work we need for our SUK citizenry, and then finally, a working format into which staff are already inputting that would help to complete the Climate Action Plan. So that's the end of my presentation, I would just like to your feedback on this, as our deliverable is, do you have any suggestions, is there anything we missed, do you have any questions?
Okay, thank you very much for the presentation and having this over to us. I'll go to the Committee of the Whole first for any questions or comments, feedback. Go ahead, Council Betos.
Are we having another presentation after this, or is this it?
There's two delegations, so this one is on the framework, and the next one is on the 7% solution.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, comments? Council St. Pierre?
Hello, thank you so much for the work, this is looking really good and achievable. I was curious about the territorial emissions compared to what per capita mission might look like, and one of the reasons I ask is because if you look at a lot of literature out there and the data, it's clear that, at least for things like the sustainability work and from drawdown and various other sources, that emissions from food, even though they're extremely difficult to pin down, are actually a huge part of what is being produced in GHGs, 50 to 67%. I know that what we're mandated by local government act is to deal with what we've measured in the territorial emissions, but we also have to deal with the reality of the actual emissions produced. Where do you see that fitting in in terms of the plan? Because it's not necessarily agriculture, I think it's more like education.
Right, so I'm, part of that will be answered also by Anna, but I will say at the outset that we see food and agriculture in both the adaptation and mitigation elements. You're right, we have not identified it as one of the pressing priorities, because we can't measure it at this point, but we do want to do work on it, and we think it's absolutely critical that initiatives begin on that. So we are not going to cover that in the writing, our writing of the plan, but we would leave that then for the district to complete that, although we are thinking we would offer some suggestions that would address exactly what you're saying. But at this point, we're trying to address the 7% reduction, so we're trying to highlight those things that actually we can measure reductions, and then we would like to take other kinds of actions that we can't measure, but we know make a difference. And the second piece of it then is on food self-sufficiency, which, of course, we know with food shortages is also going to be an issue, so the food and agriculture would also show up in the adaptation part of the report. And I'll leave the rest of the detail on emissions reductions to Anna in her report.
Other comments? Okay, Council Bateman, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lang, for that excellent presentation. I don't have any questions, because of course I'm Council's appointee to the Climate Action Committee, and this has gone through committee process. Beth, Ms. Lang, came up with this idea of a Climate Action Plan Framework, which is really useful to us, because we, you know, we were sort of four months into our year-long mandate, and with lots of great ideas circulating, and we were struggling perhaps to find the best way to bring these forward. So in 2020, the Climate Action Committee did call for a Climate Action Plan as part of its recommendations, so Beth came forward with this really remarkably solid skeletal framework that we, as, you know, I'm not a volunteer, but this collection of volunteers could do their best to flesh out by focusing in on certain key points and providing the district with a template to move forward with. So thank you very much for that, and I think it's really solid, it's gone through a few iterations, it, you know, the spine of it will be the work plan that was presented by the CAC last year, with the additional piece of the 7% solution for the mitigation side. Anyway, I could go on, but this is really solid work, and paired with what the district will be doing with its adaptation strategies, which will be based on the new Emergency Act, which will be coming out next year, which will have very strong, and I've got the details here somewhere, but very strong climate piece and social justice piece, and so that will come out next year as well. So this becomes this good iterative document that can be evolved over time, and by the end of this year, and perhaps into next year, if the Climate Action Committee gets a renewed lease on life, we can continue, you know, populate it and move it forward. I'll just, does anyone else have questions before I go into part two, which is regards this Education and Engagement Group? And Denise Withers, the consultant from Qualicum that we agreed to hire, is amazing, and the work, these little workshop sessions we've been having online with Christina Moog from the district and Sue Welke have been participating, they were part of the interviews out on the street, and they'll be joining us on Thursday for the next step as we've identified barriers. You know, it's down to, you know, and solutions, this will all come forward in due course, but yeah, I'm just really pleased with this process, that this collection of volunteers has come together and brought forward some really tangible material here for us to consider, and I know Anna Russell will now give you some hardcore strategies. Thank you, Beth, we'll see you Thursday.
Okay, I'll just check for first-time speakers, anyone on, Council Logans, go ahead.
Thank you, I'll just comment, thank you very much for the presentation, and to everyone who's put in the work, because I feel like it took a lot of grit to get to where you are, and I did not expect this outcome, so thank you very much.
Okay, I'll go to Council St. Pierre, actually, no, I will go to Council Betos, then St. Pierre.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ms. Lang, I actually found that very enlightening, I think it is, you said it's sort of a work in progress and a bit of a rough document, but it is a bit of a blueprint print, and I think Council Bateman said it's a, you know, it's a skeletal start, but it's a start, and I actually quite liked that first presentation. We'll see what happens in the next one, the 7%, but the first one, you got me sold on that, and thank you for all the hard work, and I know putting that together is not an easy task in these times, so thanks again.
Council St. Pierre?
I wanted to give you special thanks for the blocking stories, and specifically for the information provided on the role of local government, because I think one of the blocking stories is that it's up to other countries, it's up to international agreements, it's up to the federal government, it's up to everyone else but us, and yet we have 70% of the power and responsibility in our hands, and I think it's really important that you've got that out there, and that it's a part of your document, and I appreciate that a lot.
Wonderful, thank you.
Other councilors? Okay, so I'll just wrap this up, I just wanted to thank you for the presentation, I think this is excellent, I like the blocks, like the blues, and the orange, and the greens, and the highlights, and the language is really clear, I think the deliverables are very clear, it's very well put together, the spine, as you say, but it's just like, wow, I think it's great. I would just suggest that if you do need resources around the water security piece, because this is all managed through the Capital Regional District, Council St. Pierre is our appointee to the Water Commission, so sits on the big commission board, and Council Logans looks after the one, sits on the Wanda Fuga distribution, so then it kind of breaks down into distribution, and Council Logan sits there with Council McMath as alternate, so in some ways, if there's any decisions, or if they would have some materials. The CRD staff also do extensive public outreach, and so their staff would also likely be available to help and assist with anything, but if you get stuck anywhere, just let us know, because in other times when there's no COVID, they often come out and do a lot of community engagement work at our Fall Fair and CD Saturday and those types of events, so they have a lot of public-facing materials available that might help with that particular section there as well, if that's useful, so.
Yes, very useful, thank you, that's excellent, and I just want to thank everyone for their support, and for all the resources that you're suggesting, and we will continue to, we'll go back to our little burrow and keep burrowing away, and hopefully we'll be able to see you in a few months with the work that we've promised to deliver.
We look forward to it, thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll look for a motion to receive the presentation. Oh, public input, pardon me, okay, so before we receive, so I'm not going to entertain that motion, I'll go and see if there's members of the public that are registered to speak on item 7.1.
Thank you, Your Worship, Ms. Belford has joined the meeting, she may wish to speak, but I will let her respond.
Hi, I just don't have much response, other than, well done, well done, well done, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Belford, and thank you for joining with us tonight. Was that our only speaker, Ms. Mushada?
Yes, it is, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So now I'll look to Council to receive the report for information, so moved by Council Bateman, and I'll call the question then, all in favor? And that's unanimous, and our thank yous and gratitude to the committee. So, 7.2, the 7% So 7.2, the 7% solution, and this is a presentation by Anna Russell on behalf of the Climate Action Committee.
Okay, so can people see my desktop?
Yes, we see the desktop, and we see, there it is. Thank you.
Presentation? Okay, thanks. So given the summer that we're living through right now, I just want to say that I'm very grateful that everyone on council understands the climate emergency so well, and that on April 26th, you agreed to cut Suk's greenhouse gas emissions by 50% in half by 2030. And you also agreed to express that as a yearly target that would be more manageable and express that as a cut of 7% a year. I think there was courage in that resolution that you took. There was honesty as well about the scope of the emergency that we face, and I acknowledge that there was trust in that resolution. Trust that CAC would be able to come up with a proposal that would allow you to meet that target. I have taken your trust very seriously, and I know all of CAC has. And the 7% solution is our proposal for how we can be successful together in Suk. The 7% solution is not easy, but it is designed to be achievable. It is specific to Suk. It was written for you. It's organized around areas of local jurisdiction. It has a very clear focus, so that we can make the most efficient use possible of our limited resources, including the time of your very capable staff. And we've tried to anticipate the challenges that you might face in implementation and figure out how to adapt and, and deal with them ahead of time. The 7% solution is also designed to be effective, and by effective, I mean that it will actually result in greenhouse gas emission reductions. And the most important thing here on this list is that we have identified those actions that we think will have high impact, that will give you the greatest possible emission reductions for the amount of effort that you'll need to put into them. Now, there is a lot of technical information that I provided in the background materials, and I'm going to assume that you've read at least some of it, because the council process is very formal. But I am on the Climate Action Committee because I have a son whose climate future I worry about. And he has insisted that I tell you about a ship. So from a child in Suk to you, I give you this ship. So the company that owns this ship is called the Evergreen, and the ship is called the Ever Given, and it was stuck in the Suez Canal for a week last March. And I was thinking about it a lot, because at that time, I was looking at Suk's emissions data, and it seemed to me that this was a similar problem. The question is, where are the best places to apply pressure in order to shift something large and problematic? And in this analogy, please keep in mind that the Suez Canal is our atmosphere, and the ship, the Ever Given, is the pollution that we're putting in the atmosphere every year. And our immediate task, the task for 2030, is to turn that ship and shrink it so that we'll be able to clear it out of our atmosphere completely by 2030. So how do you unstick a ship that weighs 200,000 tons and is in fact stuck on both sides? Well, many small tugs tried at first, and they pushed and pulled on various edges of this hull, and they were totally unsuccessful. And some people estimate that it would have taken 80 of these small tugs to shift the Ever Given, and there is not actually room in the Suez Canal for 80 tugs. And this feels to me like our individual efforts to reduce emissions in Suk and globally, where we're all pushing and pulling in different directions on our own priorities. And it tells me that you can put in a lot of effort and not shift anything. But the Ever Given was shifted, was moved by three things. And you can see the first thing up here on the top right corner of the screen, it's a dredger, which was working with a bunch of diggers to move a whole bunch of sand away from one edge of the ship. Another thing that helped was two of these giant class tugboats. I don't know the terminology, but they were much bigger than the ones on the left, and it was exactly two of them that pulled on very specific sections of the hull that are particularly strong. But the last thing that moved the Ever Given was a full moon and a king tide. So that is how they freed the ship. But how do you unstick pollution? And I'd like you to just think that in four years, Suk's greenhouse gas pollution by weight is roughly comparable to the weight of the Ever Given. And the infrastructure producing that pollution is just as stuck in our community as the Ever Given was in the Suez Canal. So where can we apply effort to get the results that we need? After looking at the data, it showed me that there were only two strategies available to us that will produce the results we need. So the 7% solution is organized around those two high-impact actions, one which is retrofitting existing buildings in the community, and the second one, which is helping commuters to make a modal shift. So the 7% solution identifies targets for each year of the plan that we would need to meet. But I just wanted to mention that in the, in the rest of 2021, what we would start to do is identify people in the community who have already made a contribution to reducing their greenhouse gas emissions in the last three years since the last territorial emissions survey was completed. And we would be celebrating that work and that success to build momentum for the heavier work of implementing the whole plan starting in 2022. But we would start with a celebration of success. We would also need to implement the engagement strategy that Beth has been talking to us about, and the dredgers around the Ever Given moved, I don't know, a million tons of sand. And our engagement steps, strategy would be digging up support, inviting people, including them, mobilizing them, celebrating them, getting them working together. If you think about one person who's driving to Victoria every day for work in a gasoline vehicle, if they decide to take transit or work from home instead, they're saving six tons of carbon a year from entering our atmosphere. That's an amazing contribution from one individual. But as the Engagement Strategy Listening Campaign told us, people feel futile about that. It's a very small contribution to the goals that we need to meet as a community. But if 200 people make the same action, we are so well on our way to achieving our targets. The power of the 7% solution is what we can accomplish together if we're focused on just two main strategies. Now, the one thing that's missing so far in this scenario that I'm talking about is the king tide. And the king tide for me is district leadership and government action. This is what creates the enabling environment. I've outlined in the 7% solution several policy tools that the district can use to erase or ease barriers to participation, to many of those things that were identified in the, in the engagement strategy to so far in the blocking stories about why people don't take the actions that we would like them to take. We are asking people to do some heavy lifting in the 7% solution. We need to lighten the load or float the boat, if you will, so that our efforts add up to the change we need and so that individual actions will count. Without the king tide, the Ever Given would still be stuck in the Suez Canal today. So that's what my kid wanted you to know. I do want to make one more comment about the role of government, because there's no question that you will need support from other levels of government to meet these targets over time. But you will need a plan like the 7% solution in order to get funding for climate mitigation. What the 7% solution does is focus your advocacy and your political capital on a limited number of areas that are specific to Suk to gain the supports that you will need, including access to new sources of funding, potentially including access to things like the provincial carbon tax revenue. I am convinced, though, that Suk has enough resources to get started on its own, and that's a very important message in the 7% solution. So this is just a summary of how the 7% solution works, that we would be identifying those specific targets in two high-impact areas, using the public engagement strategy to encourage residents to participate, and then using district policy tools and advocacy with other levels of government to ease the barriers to participation and find the funding that you need. So the last thing I want to say is that there is a lot of anxiety around climate change, understandably, and I certainly share it, as you can tell from my voice. People need solutions, and they need new ideas, and leadership can show the way. I don't think you're going to be alone in implementing the 7% solution, but you may need to lead the surge of the king tide and invite other levels of government to join you. So the Climate Action Committee hopes that you can use the 7% solution to lead climate action, but from Suk. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Russell, for the presentation, and please also pass on our regards to your son for such an excellent example that we all likely remember from current events. So I think when it ties into the first delegation on storytelling, sometimes we forget or don't want to remember how horrible the wildfire seasons were, right? So having examples like this that we remember and can relate to, I think, help with the storytelling, so I think that's a really excellent example there. So I'll open it up to members of the committee first for some feedback. Okay, so go to Counselor Logan's, please.
Thank you so much for your presentation. I know it's hard to make an emotional presentation like that, especially when it's youth in the community who are bringing those things forward, so I appreciate that, and thanks to your son for, for stepping up and making that contribution as well. I have a question. Oh, one more comment, too. Great storytelling. I wonder where you learn those skills from? I don't know if you're a part of that Denise Withers workshop or not, but great storytelling. When I look at the number-two solution that is, sorry, I'm trying to pull this up again here, helping commuters who drive combustion-engine vehicles make that modal shift, one thing that I seem to see missing from this is anything to do with having people not need to commute at all. So that, to me, is a major area that needs to be covered in this report that I think a lot of counselors here could agree with, on many different, in many different ways. So a few things that we've talked about over the years that, that could potentially assist in, in the 7% would be, of course, local economic work and support from entrepreneurs. But also, is there a way that the District of Suk can support or promote work-from-home opportunities to employers who are in, in town or in the CRD area? Are there ways that we can ask for local coworking stations when we're doing developments? Are there any bylaws we need to implement that would support working from home in new builds? Those are the types of things I want to see, because to me, those are more, way more tangible than saying, "Take the bus," because that's not going to happen. People aren't going to take the bus. I have worked in town and in Suk and on various occasions, and I, I can't take the bus. I won't take the bus. I've also purchased a hybrid, and that is a massive impact on my income. So I think generally, if we can find ways to reduce the number of cars on the road, not by alternate forms of transportation, but by keeping people local, and I know a lot of that will happen as we grow as a community, as we bring in more infrastructure, like that's something that I don't care to see in this report, because I know it will be covered in other areas of our committees, like our Economic Development Committee and such. So I don't want to put that part on you, sorry, on your, on your group and on this solution in particular, although knowing it will, it will assist with it. But if there are ways we can get people working from home and have a local support system for them, I think that would be a much more tangible solution.
Thanks, Counselor Logan's. I'll hear from counselors, and then I'll, I have some follow-up. Counselor St. Pierre, go ahead.
I'd just like to follow up on, on some of Counselor Logan's comments, because I have my own thoughts around essentially the direct correlation between building homes that cost $700,000 to $800,000 and commuters, because we just don't have that many jobs in Suk that actually can pay for a home worth that much, and the link between having diverse price points for homes available in Suk and allowing people to work in Suk because they can actually afford the housing in Suk. I was actually asked once when I was talking about affordable housing, where I want to put the affordable housing? Where are you going to put this affordable housing with all these poor people? And I said, "In, in Victoria. I'd like some $700,000 homes in Victoria, so the people working in Victoria can actually live in Victoria." That's where I want my affordable housing. That keeps people off the roads. Counselor Logan's was suggesting that there might be some advocacy work around affordable housing, and I would love, I don't know, I guess subsidies for lawyers so they can stay in Victoria, or, you know, professionals can just stay put. That would be nice, too. It would actually help us with our commuter issue. So one of the, one of the questions I think might want to be addressed, which feeds into what Counselor Logan was saying, was just looking at our commuters, what they need and what's the source of the commuting? Because the modal shift itself won't actually solve anything, especially if we keep on allowing more people to our community into homes that are worth $800,000 apiece. So just thought I'd make that comment, and I think your work is wonderful.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Betos?
Yeah, first of all, I do appreciate your passion. With that passion comes results, and when you're passionate about a project, it, it makes a lot of difference. I love goals. We need to have goals in order to achieve them. We have to know what we're aiming for, and nothing gets done without goals, so I applaud you on that. I understand this is work in progress, but the devil's in the details, and I'm finding there's a lot of details lacking here. When we set the target of 50% by 2030, and then that equates to 7%, and now I'm finding that we're not including new builds. And I go to Transition Suk, which gave me a great long talk about how much a new build produces greenhouse gases and the effect on it. And if we're to achieve our 50%, that has to be calculated in there, and that has to be calculated to the seven. That's just, these are sometimes a suggestion, because I know you're going to go ahead and work on this some more, and I appreciate that very much. So there are some areas in here which I, again, the devil's in the details, and I don't want to beach up on a lot of the details. But, you know, you talk about offering free purchase inspections for used electrical vehicles. Who, who would do that? Would that be a staff person? What would be the qualifications? And what is the liabilities? I like those things flushed out by somebody. If we have somebody that does a pre-inspection on a used EV and the person crashes and kills himself the next day, I, I think we have to be conscious of what our liabilities are, and that has to work into the whole picture. And same with coordinating group purchasing. There's a lot of things here, like pay full cost or retrofits for people living in energy poverty, means testing. There's some, there's some privacy issue when it comes to means testing. Some of these things are a little bit simplistic, simplistic, so I, I don't know whether your committee is actually the ones that should flush that out or not, but I do have some concerns about that. The other thing is, I, what bothers me a lot is that, you know, we're working in Suk for Suk Solutions, but we're one of 13 municipalities in this area, and to me, a lot of these things that you're suggesting would be better served under the CRD banner, because when we go up to group buys or we do an educational piece, our concerns and Langford's concerns and Macho's concerns are very similar. And if we all have two or three people dedicated to each one of these things in 13 municipalities, we'll have a 14th municipality. I'd like to see us a little bit more, I agree with you, we can't do this alone. We need the CRD involved. We need the province involved. We need everybody involved, including us, and I don't have a problem with that. But I, I'm still not clear on, I've asked for specific things that we can do, and these things that I see here are sort of up there, and they're really short on details. So I'm hoping that your group can go away and give us a little bit more in details. If we're going to have a cost with this, and there will be, is, you know, do we hire staff? Do we hire consultants? You know, there's, there's a big financial impact of all of these things you're suggesting. And I'm not saying by any means that they are bad ideas. I mean, I'd love to everybody to have a heat pump, but I mean, you're, you're looking at, you know, I look at your figures, and these are your figures, 15% residents retrofitted by 2022. Well, that's like 700 residents. That's just my rough math. I'm usually very good at math, but, so that, that's a pretty tall order, and that money, what are they, about, I don't know, $7,000, $8,000 for a heat pump? That's a lot of money. So I'm just asking that the committee go ahead and work on a few more of these details, and I'd be happy to entertain it in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Other counselors? Okay, thank you. Other councillors? Oh, go ahead, Ms. Russell.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to clarify. I think those are all excellent points. But I just wanted to clarify that in the math that I had done in trying to figure out how many residences are included, it's really hard. And I spent a lot of time on it and tried to come at it from three different perspectives. And I think what I can tell you is that you're talking more about 200, around 200 residences would be 15%. Just so you know, it's not 700, because that is a terrifying number. That's all. Thank you.
I figured about 5,000 or so residences and 15%. I think there's more like 7,000 or 8,000. But so I just, like you say, I just do some rough math out there. So obviously, we're miles apart, 200 and 700. But those are big numbers when you, in one year, for heat pumps. So, you know, I'm just saying that there's a lot of work needs to be done further. I appreciate what you've done so far. And I am looking for solutions. I made that quite clear in the beginning, that I would like to have some concrete plans that we can do, and that's achievable at the municipal level. And a lot of these things that you have mentioned here will not happen unless we have the provincial, province on side, and we have the feds on side, and we get BC Hydro on side. All these people have to come into play. And I know it's easier for us as a municipality to go after these different groups and say, look, we're serious about this, and I think that's important. But they have to be at the table, and the CRD has to be at the table. We are not going to do it alone. And the 7%, even when it came the first time, was upsetting to me in that there was no statement in there in partnerships with the CRD, the federal government, and the provincial government. And that, to me, is key to this whole thing. When the money flows, because we're going to need the money to make these things happen, and I don't mind trying to make them happen, I feel very strongly about the climate change. It is here. It is very dangerous, and we have to do something. But again, I need a few more details before I can act. And I need other people involved, like the province. I mean, we can't do a sewer project except today, when they toss, you know, $4.5 million at us, which is great. So you can take it for what it is. I'm trying not to be too critical. I do appreciate the work you're all doing. And I do appreciate your passion. But there's a lot, a lot of holes in this that need to be ironed out. And I don't know whether it's the committees or staffs or what, but there's a dollar thing here. And right now, we're really, really short on dollars. So take it for what it is. Thanks.
Counselor McMath, then St Pierre.
I think it's great that you spoke, because you kind of reflect a portion of the community that she was referring to, where you have those blocker stories, where you're looking to other groups to lead or make the decision before we make an action. And no one said it was going to be easy. And when we say easy, we mean cheap. And so we, it is up to us to take the lead and be the moon. But we have to advocate for it. And so if it starts from the bottom up, then that's the way that it has to be. And we can't wait for federal, provincial. We have to show them. And what I love is when you first came to us, the first report, it was really nerve-wracking. We did put our trust in you. And when you came back, it's like unbelievable what you've done, what you took from us. So I hope you guys continue again with that. So I love measurables. Like, I love your passion. I love your storytelling. But more than that, I love how you've broken down the percentages, how you've laid out what the goals are. And if you guys can just continue to break it down further. And then our job and our responsibility here is to advocate for those bigger pieces from the province and federally as well. So thank you so much for all of your work and your passion.
Counselor St Pierre, then Bateman.
Just going to comment a little bit on the fact that these are actually smart objectives. You've nailed the two main contributors and some strategies that will work. So that's totally appreciated. The other thing that I wanted to just mention was the 80/20 rule. And that's that, you know, 80% of your effort can get you 20% of your, sorry, 20% of your effort gets you 80% of your result. And then it takes another 80% of your effort to get the last 20% of your result. I fully expect that the first 7% is actually not that hard, necessarily, if you're actually tapping into what's already been done, and you're riding on the shoulders of rebates already done, and you're using coordination to basically spread out the information. The first 7%, not necessarily a big deal. But when you start digging deeper and deeper, that's when you need the other 80% of the effort. And I do think that the other levels of government will come on side, that as we end up with more heat domes and more issues, more resources will come on side. But if we start the process now, then we're in good shape to actually complete it. And I think that's just wonderful.
Counselor Bateman.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Russell, for this. And it's a pretty remarkable piece of work for a community our size coming out of a volunteer committee. As I say again, with, you know, our total possible budget this year is $15,000. I know the OCP committee has $200,000 budget for your consultants, for the consultants. And the master plans have all had significant funding towards them. So here we are, working towards a climate action plan that will actually address, job one of this community is to reduce GHGs by 40% is the provincial standard. The national standard, I think, is now up to 45 after BC 12. The Bill C-12 came through last week, or two weeks ago. And what we're looking at here is, as Anna has told us, a very concise, elegant approach, an aspirational set of steps that would actually do something real about GHG emissions in our community. You know, it's a bit shameful. You know, there's healthy shame and there's unhealthy shame. You know, in 2007, we'd say, we said, made a commitment through the Climate Action Charter to reduce GHGs by, what was it? God, help me here.
33%.
33% by 2020. And we managed 0.1%. So the problem there, as BC 12 has identified in Ottawa, is climate accountability. So BC 12, after much revision, has emerged with a set of five-year plans. From, first one will go to 2026, and then onwards to 2050. And this will give the government, as they did in Soviet Russia, you know, with those nice, neat visions for five-year periods. And stuff happens. And you can look at it, you can adjust it, you can move it forward. So here in Little Sook, you know, they do have practical GHG drawdown plans in Toronto, Vancouver, Winnipeg, Halifax. But small communities are not doing these kind of practical, real-world roadmaps. So I think here in Sook, we can take some pride. As the premier said at his press conference this morning around the wastewater treatment plant, climate is job one for all of us. And here we have a situation. You know, Anna has presented here the briefing notes, the executive summary, in other words, then the detailed package that expands on that executive summary, and then the tables, which are remarkably detailed, looks at consumer habits in Sook, you know, the number of cars, 2,775 cars on Sook Road west of Gillespie, 85% of them are single occupancy, 400 of them move on through town to Camp Lake Road. You know, there's, it's quite a fascinating document, those tables. They do note that, you know, as much as our transportation master plan is going to create a much, much more efficient, comfortable, enjoyable community, it's not going to necessarily reduce GHG emissions by very much. So again, we come back to these two key tugboats for our future. And they are kind of practical. They work on, they can work at a grassroots level. They can work at an advocacy level, I agree. They can work at, where am I going here? And local government levels, where we, as Anna has acknowledged, we have limited resources. We're a small community. And we're doing our best, and we're going to demonstrate to the world, to the UBCM, that, you know, here's a community that's going to give it its best shot, knowing that it's incredibly difficult and likely unachievable. You know, in our climate emergency, we spoke of an aspirational goal. Well, this is aspirational. And as we come up short, and as we find ways to measure progress, we can start making, it's like us getting these shovel-ready projects, right? So we are, this is kind of a shovel-ready project for practical action in reducing GHGs. So in 2024, maybe we can go and say, look, to the province, or the CRD, or the feds, and say, look, we gave it our best shot. We come up short. But, you know, we wouldn't have come up short if you provided us with X, Y, or Z. So to me, it's, you know, naturally, I'm a fan of it. Also, you know, the thing with BC Transit, I agree. But one of the interesting pieces here is that this 7% solution dovetails with the engagement campaign. And part of the engagement campaign is to say, look, we've got a brand-new BC Transit local area plan with improved local service, improved regional service. We already have 12% of our commuters take the bus. I agree completely with the teleworking piece and getting people home. And that's one of the great things with Anna's documents here, is that she does provide us with that set of policy tools and ideas. One of them is local job creation, telecommuting offices, local economic development to bring existing jobs home. That's on page four, or page 26 of the agenda tonight. And I agree, some of them are long shots. But it's, this is a committee coming up with some wild-minded ideas that are, in fact, rooted in possible realities. And in previous, Campbell River, back in 2013, had a program where 130, I think, energy assessments were offered up to the people of Campbell River, and they took advantage of that. It cost the municipality, I think, $150 per energy assessment. And this was part of drawdown Campbell River. And it won a UBCM award. Not that winning awards is the game, but it was like a clever local solution. So here's a set of made-in-Sook solutions. Yeah. So I won't go on, but I just want to thank Ms. Russell and the CAC for, I call it CAC, by the way, not CAC.
Call it CAC. We love the CAC.
Okay, so there's mixed feelings on that name. Anyway, I'm not sure where to go with this. But there is a potential motion on the floor that came out of the CAC, which I will bring forward once we finish this section.
Thank you, Counselor Bateman. So I just have some comments. I really appreciate the work that was done here. I really like how you said to start with a celebration of success. I'm curious to know, you know, when I heard a lot of folks gardening through COVID, like, what did they do? What did they create? What was imagined and what was realized? I know that Sook Elementary, when you spoke of the children, took a sort of unused section of the back parking lot and created a whole, what they call garden under cedars. And they transplanted a lot of native species from the library lands that were clear and other parts. And all of the school has a role in maintaining the gardens. And then they have all the signage in place. And even the kindergartens had the role of watering the plants every day. So it's really unique and special. And the whole area is completely transformed, and it's lovely. So it's one example that I've seen. I've also seen, over the years that I've lived here, sort of the pride of the green, beautiful lawn switched to the brown, beautiful lawn, and now there's no lawn at all. But like other plantings that don't require water, or drought resistant, and deer resistant, and the like. So be curious to see those stories on what individuals have done. Many have created, you know, the reality of food security. So we want to grow our own, and they're continuing to do, with a lot of success. And you see a lot of sharing, you know, I have 20 heads of lettuce, and what do you have, and what can we swap? So love those kinds of stories. I'm curious, I know our ECT Dev Committee is doing a lot of work. Work Link is at the table about the work from home, the shared space, the swing space, and the like. So it'll be interesting to see how, as that work develops, it sort of all folds in together. And then in terms of development, Aragon, with their approvals and their development permit, also shared that they're doing work from home space in an amenity building, which is great. And I believe Sun River has the same in one of their amenity buildings in Rivers Edge. So we're seeing those elements. And so it'd be great to have, you know, see how we can develop tools. You are right in that pursuing funding means we need to come forward with a plan. And so this positions us to say, okay, we've done our part here as local government. We need the federal government or the provincial government to step in. I think we're going to see, at UBCM this year, we're going to hear more from the province about the tools that they're developing. There's also, when you spoke of resolutions, there is resolutions coming forward. We're not happy, as local governments, that the care of funding was yanked. So we're rallying on that. So there's those elements that are going to come forward in September, as well as a white paper on local government finance. And in that document, it focuses on climate action, as one, housing is another, and I can't remember the third. But that's where the various pieces break down, with recommendations that'll go to the province. So that gives us another advocacy tool. And also, FCM, there's a lot of great work quoted in here from the Federation. But we're heading potentially into what sounds like a federal election. So that gives us a good opportunity to ask the candidates, you know, we've done all these pieces locally, and where's the federal government on X, Y, and Z? So we have that ability. And so having this type of information positions as well for those advocacy pieces. In terms of the discussion over residents and the number of, you know, maybe household over residents, I'm just going to throw that out there because you could have six members of a family, but that's only one heat pump that's needed and not six, because they're all living in that house, for example. I'm curious to see, we have a large number of residents that work for the provincial government. So as we hit step four, what does the return to work look like? How many residents now will have the option to continue working from home and not have to rely on the commute? So some companies are already developing that kind of policy. So it'll be curious to see how that evolves and how that keeps residents here in our community. I think us hiring is a good thing. And the more locals that come and work for us is good, because then we've taken their vehicle off the road. And then hopefully, they love working here so much that they'll just want to move here, you know, because, right? I'm looking at a few people here. But just, anyway. The other pieces, and the other pieces we could weave in is that School District 62, of which we're a party to, is beginning to electrify their fleet of school buses. So that would be another piece. And incorporating that data, as well as what the South Nation and their initiatives are around the shoreline and others, would be great as well. So that's all. It brings us to celebrating with success. But with every year, they're looking to do more. And how can we weave these pieces together? A couple of pieces for me are, like, what about the tourism impact? You know, like, sometimes when I'm down at the highway, I'm like, where are all these people going? Like, or, you know, it seems like it must be really busy in town. But when you come up into the community, it's not busy. It's just Highway 14, in and out. And so they're either, they're going beyond us, or coming from beyond. And, you know, I can't, you know, I almost want to stand there and, like, where are you going? Where are you coming from? Because, like, what is going on? So what is, what impact does that have? Because they're not living here, but certainly the emissions are coming through. And then the other piece is around the construction impact. So we need to build out a transportation network that is safe, that encourages active transportation. But of course, that involves, in some cases, the blasting, the digging, might hit the odd tree, and also pouring of a lot of concrete. So then we hear, oh, we don't want any of the GHGs there. But in order to encourage a mode shift, the road network has to be safe. So I feel like we have to do these things. And they should be calculated in. And I understand from our team here is that is now a factor with the grants, right? We do need to add in the construction impact. So I guess then later, we can remove it as we see more folks using it. But that is a barrier for folks to travel around Sook by bike or by walking, is because the trails are not connected, and it doesn't feel safe. And I'm one of them. I'm a sketchy cyclist at the best of times. So going out into traffic is just not a good thing for anybody. But on a safe trail system, I would do it for sure. So I'm looking, and then we are focused on doing that work. The other piece is to have the density where we need it and the construction. The other piece is to have the density where we need it, and the construction impact, the commercial build-outs that we desperately need to create the workspace or the business opportunities, but then that's where we get a pushback of, we don't want to pour all that there. But then that means the status quo, and that doesn't work either. So any, if there's any language that could be sort of added in that helps us address that, I think that will help us move forward as we design and build out the community that we need to do. And then my other piece in here is on transit. So I sit on the transit commission, and we do need more service out here, and that's well-known. We finished the local area plan that has transit, more options available. And one conversation I've led there is, we also need to make it attractive. So I jokingly said once, well, things you can't do in a vehicle, you can do on the bus. Like, you could have that other drink and get on the bus. You could text while you're on the bus. You can watch movies and read books and do all those things on the bus. Like, you can't do any of that driving. You'll get all sorts of tickets and fines. But you can write your Christmas cards on the bus. You can meal plan on the bus. Like, these are clearly all things I do on the bus. And then when I'm not on the bus, I wonder why I'm still behind in life. So there's a positive to riding the bus, that is, in addition to saving money and all these things, and we're advocating for that needed transit service. So I think we'll see more transit come online as the service recovers. They need to plan 18 months out, and that's where we're all at. But otherwise, I, so yeah, anything like that as we round out. But and then I think some more pieces. And then it prepares us well for the advocacy work that we love to do and are looking forward to doing, and I, and I, so I just thank you for all the tools and the work that's been done. It's just excellent work, and I think with it being so grassroots by volunteers, it just makes it more impactful, more meaningful, and more of a made-in-Souk solution. And that's not, that's not to mean, to be any disrespect to our consultants, who are also doing excellent work. But this, you know, on legislative documents, yes, we need that, but on here, when we really need the community to shift, it's important. And I, you know, I have a young son as well, so I don't, as he gets older, if he asks me, like, why didn't you do this? I didn't want to say, well, it was so difficult at the time. Like, I need to say that we've done everything we could with what we knew. So I think that's where I would like to land in this in the end, is that we made, we did as much as we could with what we know. Wisdom is hindsight, but we've done something, and we're doing our best in this way. So thank you very much for the work there. And I think that concludes any commentary from counsel. So Ms. Russell, is there anything you'd like to add before we wrap up?
No, thank you very much. That was very helpful.
Okay, thank you. So counsel, look, did you mention that you had a motion? Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, so it...
Oh, pardon me, sorry. I need to turn to the public for their input. I'm so sorry about that, members of the public.
Thank you, Your Worship. Again, I'll give Ms. Belford the opportunity, as she did ask for possibly the opportunity to speak to this.
Hi, I just want to say again, congratulations. I think this is a wonderful step. I'm really excited. And I would like to note as well that in terms of concrete achievable plans and actions, the new OCP contains a lot of them. So, you know, this is really exciting. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Belford. Were there any other speakers?
No, Your Worship, there wasn't.
Okay. So Counsel Bateman, did you have a motion to hear?
Yeah. Well, this is the motion that came out of the Climate Action Committee at our late-June meeting. And so I'll read it as it came out, knowing that, so I'd like some advice here. If indeed this motion is defeated, am I able to make a modified version of it?
Yes.
Okay, good. So this is the motion that came out of the Climate Action Committee, and it's in the agenda on page one, or page 23 of the agenda tonight. And that is that counsel approved the Climate Change Mitigation Strategy, the 7% solution, and proceed with its implementation by directing staff with CAC support and review to, one, create an implementation work plan, two, prepare budget recommendations for incorporation in the district's next five-year financial plan, and three, investigate funding sources and partnerships required to implement the strategy fully. So that's the motion.
Okay, so let's get it up on the screen, and then I'll go to Counsel Bateman first as the mover, because he doesn't require a seconder.
I don't have page numbers.
Oh, okay.
So...
Briefing notes.
Briefing note, counsel, version two, first page. Oh, there.
Yeah.
Ah, in the gray box.
Yeah.
[inaudible]
Pardon me?
of the whole, there's no seconder, so you may speak to this.
Right, okay. So I guess the view of the Climate Action Committee is that we in the district have declared a climate emergency, and there is evidence, plenty of that emergency, increasingly so, undoubtedly with the next wildfire and the first smoke days of the year, as we've had the last two years here in Souk. It's evident we need to begin to take action, and the 7% solution has gone through extensive work. It's ready to roll in its current form as a set of suggestions and recommendations that now need to be looked at by professional staff, who would, as they did with the Climate Action Work Plan last year, come back to us with what is realistic and doable here at our district level, along with some recommended budget items for inclusion in the 2022 and beyond five-year financial plan. And to also, to have a look, and this would be a high-level look, as with the suggestion of this implement, the work plan, these are high-level staff input into this suggested strategy. So that's the, yeah, there we go.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Bateman. So I have Counsel Betos and Counsel Logans. Go ahead.
Yeah, actually, Counsel Bateman and I are not far off. I don't like this recommendation, first of all, because I don't think you're there yet. I think more work needs to be done. And I get a little alarmed when I hear that these goals are likely not achievable. I like goals that are achievable. And I'm not really clear as what we are implementing. So I'd feel much better is if we received this for information, asked staff to look it over and give us a brief on the feasibility of some of these recommendations. Now, that's not too dissimilar to what you were saying, Counsel Bateman, but I'm a little loathe to have it as it is there. I'd much rather wait a little bit of time, give staff a chance to look at this, and I'm sure staff heard some of my concerns about some of these goals for the 7% solution. I don't have any trouble with the first one, but the 7% solution, I have a great deal of problems with, and I don't know if they are even possible. And I would like to know that before I pass this recommendation about the 7% solution. I'd much rather hear it now, if staff said, well, no, we can't do that for privacy reasons, and then we can go back to CAC, who's doing some good work, I'm not knocking their work, and fine-tune that, and come and have a look at it again. But the way it's worded now, it's sort of a, this is what you're working with, and you make it happen if you can. And I'd like to have a little bit of a professional look at this before it gets to that stage. And I don't think that's an unreasonable request. There are, there are many things that I've circled in here, not just the ones I mentioned tonight. And we have a very competent staff, and I would really like to hear their opinion of some of these recommendations before we start wasting, I don't want to say wasting, we start using resources when it might be just a simple matter of, gee, that, you know, that sounds good, but it's not workable. So I cannot support the motion as it is, but I certainly, the heart of the motion that you said, I, if it was reworded, you know, I could, I could live with it, providing we receive and get a report from staff, and then in a month's time, look at it again and make a resolution then. I'd be much happier with that.
Would you like to make an amendment?
Well, I'd like to make an amendment that we receive as presented, and thank the Climate Action Committee. They have done some wonderful work here.
You can only make the amendment, you can't speak to it.
Oh, draft. It was on a roll. Well, I'd just like to say that we receive it and have staff look it over and give us an opinion. Is that good enough, or do I need more than that?
Not friendly. Okay, well, hold that thought, though, for a moment. Yeah, come back to you.
Okay.
Counsel Logans.
I completely support this motion. We've been seeing wait collectively as a world since the 80s, and that's why we're in this position today, actively endangering the lives of those who come after us. So I can be as critical as I want about this document, but the reality is, all of this is good. And what's the worst that can happen out of moving this forward? We educate, we help people, we do better. I don't think those are bad things. There is no time and energy spent on this that will be wasted. There is no funding spent on this that will be wasted, and the CAC has done an excellent job. They'll continue to meet our needs and do better with the information we provide them, and I completely support it. I think it's, it's, there's no, there's literally no reason to wait any longer on this. Let's get this moving.
Okay, Counsel McSt Pierre, I believe.
Thank you. I agree with Counsel Logans, and I also agree with Counsel Betos, because I think that his intent is actually covered in the recommendation as it stands. And I'm just going to reread it. The counsel approved the Climate Change Mitigation Strategy, the 7% solution, which I believe we've already done, and proceed with its implementation by directing staff with support and review to create an implementation work plan, which would then have to be approved. So this is not final approval, we're not committing any funding, we're not actually moving forward on budget. So there's, there'll be other opportunities to basically say, okay, is this workable or is this not? This is basically doing exactly what Counsel Betos is asking, which is send it to staff, let us know if it works, that's the implementation plan, let us know what it's going to cost, that's the budgeting. So I think that this actually meets probably all of council's needs, and should be doable. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel McMath.
Through Your Worship to staff, do you need more clarity as far, like, my only concern is, how is staff going to tackle this with a vague general statement like that? What's your perspective on this?
Yes, I think that, you know, the vulnerability is, where is the mark within that aspirational framework? And how hard and fast would counsel want to see budget numbers in the five-year financial plan? This could quickly ratchet up to a significant part of our five-year financial plan going forward, depending on what sorts of financial assistance we give to meeting the two major priorities. You know, if we start subsidizing modal shift, if we subsidize old stock and refurbishing or bringing old housing stock up to snuff, it could actually really be a financial impact. So to me, it's that vulnerability of the aspirational piece. That said, we do, we're obligated by law to put our targets into our OCP, and we're obligated to have a policy framework to meet those goals. We know we can't go below what the BC government is mandating us to do. So at some point, it's going to take some financial resources for us as a society to get there. Understanding what it would take in our community to meet those targets is extremely important for us. And I know that we all are probably doing the math, 1% tax increase is $85,000, and what's the impact of that? So we can certainly do some modeling around this. But in order to meet those targets, the resource isn't going to be there. And as Ms. Russell suggested in her presentation, there are some levers, you know? What is the provincial government and the federal government doing with carbon tax? How are they using those funds to meet the targets that they're setting and mandating us to meet? Is the use of those funds transparent and open, so that we all know, when we fill up our internal combustion engine at the pump, that there's a portion of that going to meet these goals in the long run? So I feel very vulnerable about this, but I'm so thankful for the committee and the work that they're doing, to at least have the data in front of us and know what the impact is, a lot more clear than we did three months ago in our community. That doesn't answer your question, Counsel McMath.
Not at all.
But I just don't know what the impact in our five-year financial plan is going to be. I know it'll be an iterative process with counsel in order for us to make some resources available.
So is it possible for at least us to target next year to hit that mark, and like, staff bring forward five opportunities with like a variety of price ranges? Is that something that staff has the time and is able to do?
Yeah, and I think that using 2021 and the remainder of 2021 to gather that data for the shift that has already happened in the first two years since the last milestones were reported on in 2018, fairly easy to do. But going beyond that and understanding, you know, what role we can play, so I see two different roles, the funding role and the policy role. The policy role, again, is going to be an iterative process with counsel, but I really think that the social mobilization piece and the feedback from the storytelling will give us some good tools to continue to go down this path. It'll be an iterative process, but we're fortunate, we are so fortunate to have a group this dedicated and this knowledgeable helping us through this, so I'm very grateful for that.
We are. Is there anything else you need out of this motion for that, or that's just the general understanding?
No, just an understanding that we will take this and do some modeling. But we're not going to come with unreasonable requests for our resources. At the end of the day, this is about balance, and is about balancing where we are, where we need to be, doing some backcasting, and coming up with some solutions to start from where we're at.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I think sort of what I heard is, does this motion provide the direction to staff? I'm hearing that that works. I hear that there is a concern about resources, and I think we appreciate that as well, as does the committee. And I just wanted to share one piece that is known by, because this isn't just a problem unique to Souk, this is all local governments are facing this. And this is out of the, when I mentioned that there's a local government finance report coming, it, "For climate change mitigation and adaptation supports, significant capital and operating expenses are required by local governments to reduce emissions and create weather-resilient communities. These include supports for emergency management, housing in buildings, transportation, transit, solid waste management. The committee recognized a solution-focused approach would lead to effective outcomes, establish the goals and objectives to guide the work." And this is where it's establishing a strong partnership with the province. Solution and outcomes must be anchored in common or shared provincial, local government goals, objectives. Solutions must be a win-win. Focus on the solution and outcomes where local government can help. can help achieve the outcome more effectively than the province and to build awareness. So it's identified, to your point, Mr. McKinnis, that we may not have the resources, but I think if we, if we move forward with this and we have our staff report back, which we know that they will, it'll then say, okay, we have a funding shortfall of X. That puts us in a good position to the province or the feds to say, look, we cannot do this. This is exactly what is in this report and this is where we're stuck. We want to do this, but we also have to build an inclusive, like there's a whole shopping list of things we need to do and this is where we need you to step in and this is where, what funding tool are you providing to us for us to action out this work? So this is shared by all. And I think by moving forward on this, and I know that our staff will give us good information, it'll prepare us properly. And, and then it's the case of, okay, we've done our part and we need to get the funding partners to come in and step up with that piece. Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Beddoes.
Yeah, I just say the CEO has put my mind at ease. I mean, we're both talking the same thing here. Again, I'm not exactly ecstatic with the way it's written, but it will achieve the same thing and I trust our staff and our CEO will give us a pretty blunt assessment of some of these things, whether they're achievable or not. And that's really what I was looking for anyway, so I will support the motion.
Okay, great conversation. I will call the question then on the motion. All those in favor, please? And that's unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Ms. Russell and the Climate Action Committee for your work. Counselor Bateman is happy and.
Just a quick point of order, your worship. We're in committee of the whole, so the committee of the whole has to make recommendation to council to do that.
I'm aware of that. Would you like that as, I mean, we did pass the motion, I was aware of that, but I didn't think to add that. It should be that the committee of the whole recommends to council. We're all, we all understand that. It should be, I should have caught that, or maybe you should have point of order it earlier. Okay, so over to item eight, our reports section. The first one up is the strategic priorities update.
Thank you, worship. The committee report and this presentation is meant to provide a quarterly update to the strategic priorities chart ending June 30th, 2021, and to introduce the priorities for the period of July to December for the remainder of this year. So as a reminder to you, information and for information for those that may not be familiar with our strategic planning process, just another quick refresher. The strategic priorities chart is a tool to keep council's priorities at the forefront and to ensure that the priorities are properly resourced and implemented, as we just had some discussion around. So if this stuff does make it into the priorities chart, then it is our responsibility to bring forward those resources that are needed. So the strategic priorities, sorry, just said that, the most significant shortcoming of the framework is that it's very short, focused on short-term objectives with the now items on a six-month horizon and the next items on a 12-month horizon. That's why it's important to remember that the strategic priorities chart is always in service to the longer-term vision and mission in the council's strategic plan. In addition to the vision, mission in the strategic plan, we must also follow the values and guiding principles that are in the plan. This is important for the more complex and slow-moving realities that we face as community builders, as reflected in the values and principles that are on the screen now. The short-term focus of the priorities chart and the long-term values and guiding principles together is a good framework to address the challenges and the opportunities that we face in SUC. And it also aligns our funding with the resources that are available on an annual basis through the budgeting process. And of course, this is the difficult work of council and the strategic priority chart helps us with this work. Again, just a quick background on the, the process that we went through since this term of council. So in December, September 30th, 2019, council approved the 2019 to 2022 council strategic plan. On June 29th and August 7th of 2020, the CEO, staff and council participated in a service capacity review workshop. And on September 14th, 2020, council received the strategic priorities 2020 report and the first iteration of the strategic priorities chart. The chart was updated on February 2nd of 2021 and was reported again to council, to committee of the whole on April 16th. And the current chart is displayed on the screen now. The strategic plan includes three overarching goals, to build a reputable organization, to demonstrate leadership in climate action, and to manage long-term growth while enhancing community identity, vitality and safety. And they were in my written report that's on the agenda, but I'll quickly go through the seven now and four next action items. So the first now item is enhance communication with the community. This will continue to be a priority as we experiment with internal and external communication and engagement. I am suggesting that this priority be removed from the chart, but the July chart will include a framework based on the annual planning and budget cycle that I'll get into a little bit later. Item number two is capital project updates. Council received their first official update in April and will receive their next quarterly update at the July 26th regular council meeting. And I'm suggesting that we remove this from the chart and integrate this into a routine quarterly reporting process. Item number three is to improve corporate culture and strive for service excellence. This priority will garner more focus as we move into step four of the B.C. restart program. An LA staff meeting will happen in the fall with a half-day workshop dedicated to organizational culture with department updates on all of our budgeting and planning processes from the department level. Reestablish the Climate Action Committee. The Climate Action Committee is doing great work, as we just witnessed by the presentations to the committee of the whole earlier this evening. I'm suggesting that this priority be removed from the chart, but there are suggested priorities on the new chart to support the work of the committee. Number five is the Community Economic Development Strategy. In mid-July, the Community Economic Development Committee will begin engaging in SUC in a three-part engagement process to gather information about the current state of our business and the economy, the local economy. And to gather information for ideas for the Community Economic Development Strategy, there are three parts to the engagement. From July 15th to August 5th, we will connect with SUC storefront business owners through a business walk and with home-based businesses, construction and industrial businesses by telephone. From July 15th to August 20th, through a survey, learn about how SUC citizens and nonprofit organizations interact and experience SUC's local economy. And the third part is from September 28th to October 15th, we will share a draft of high-level elements of the Community Economic Development Strategy with the community for feedback. The sixth item on the now priorities in the current chart is to complete an inventory of secondary suites. This item went to the land use and planning committee with recommendations that came back to council. Council has requested more information to be brought back on, for further discussion on two of the recommendations, those being excluding garage parking and calculating parking for requirements for suites and using water consumption to calculate wastewater rates for building purposes. This priority has been changed and you'll see it identified differently on the July 2021 chart. And finally, the seventh on the now priorities is John Phillips Memorial Park development. And of course, we will be completing the alternative approval process for the lands application and that will be included on the July 21 chart. Quickly, the four next items that are on the current chart is to form a follow-up cultural assessment. This will be moved up to a now item and will be completed within the next six months. Develop a climate adaptation and mitigation strategy. As you heard, the Climate Action Committee work continues on this priority. Ultimately, a SUC strategy will need to be informed by the New Emergency Program Act. The new act was originally scheduled for the fall of 2021, but has been pushed back now to the spring of 2022. And I'm suggesting moving this up to a now priority in the July 2021 chart and aligning policy based on the strategy to a next item in the chart, as you'll see in a minute here. Post-COVID planning, the District of SUC will participate in reviewing our pandemic planning and response with the Regional Emergency Management Program. And we'll be using information from the business walk to, with a view of increasing resilience in our local business sector. So that's work that will be going on over the next six months as well. And finally, Lot A development. It was suggested that this item be moved up to a now item in the new chart. Access from the Evergreen Shopping Center was identified as a critical piece to success of development of these lands. This work needs to be a priority as the public plaza begins its design process and discussions with Skyline that owns the shopping center is in progress and will be complete, are included on the July chart. Quickly on advocacy, we had made a commitment that we will track and report on the advocacy issues. We've got a framework in place, but we're still trying to put together a strategy to gather all of the advocacy items that all seven of you do and report back on that in a, in a meaningful way. So that's still a work in progress. I just want council to understand that we haven't lost that and it's something that we're committed to, reporting better on the advocacy issues. The operational strategies that are on the screen are for review and certainly answer any questions at the end of the presentation. Some items on this list will also be included on the July 2021 chart. Just a comment that our day-to-day operations are really challenging our capacity to put as much time into these operational strategies as we had hoped. But hopefully, with the addition of, with the filling of some vacant positions and some considerations in the new budget, we will be able to move from the day-to-day staffing and do a little bit more work on the operational strategies. So that brings us to the proposed July 2021 chart. And based on feedback and discussion, discussion at my annual performance review earlier this month from council, the chart's on the screen and it's also in your agenda package. And it's recommended that the chart, that this is the chart for July to December of 2021 for the remainder of the year. And let me just quickly go through, there are 12 items on the now action item in the new chart. And I'll just briefly go over it. So in your agenda package, there was the, the goal with the objective, there was a description or a purpose statement, what the result would be if we meet those objectives and how it aligns with council's values that are in the strategic plan. So the first goal is to engage, an engagement plan for the 2022 five-year financial plan. So as I said earlier, we, we really want to use the annual planning and budget cycle as the major internal and external communication piece. So we want to improve the understanding of our planning and budget process. And if we're successful in that, the result will be support for capital and operating projects and citizen input into service levels. So we want people to be able to see from year five to year one, how we're moving through projects. Right now, we'll take the sport box for example, there was some really good engagement in 2014. There was a grant application in that era, was not successful. We applied it for another grant and now we've got a project. But we had people coming into our community that weren't part of that 2014 engagement. So they couldn't see the progress. So we really want people to be able to see the progress from the first year of the five year financial plan right through until it's funded in the current year. So that's our goal and that'll be what we try and build our annual engagement process around. So won't be doing, sucked into this idea that we need to engage on everything. We'll have a fairly succinct view of what we do want to engage in and stay away from over-engagement if we can. The second one is to capital project reporting updates on the five-year financial plan. The description of the purpose is to improve information available to the public and the result will be transparency and increased awareness of public use, funding use. The council value is long-term thinking. The follow-up cultural assessment is a now item. Review of the organizational chart and we'll be posing some new positions for the 2022 budget. The, the description of the, the purpose there is to determine the best use of non-market growth revenue and to consider tax increases where service levels are not being met. So we'll be looking for council for some feedback on service levels and what you're hearing out there from the public where we're not meeting those service levels and either changing those service levels or asking for further resources to meet those service levels. Consider, so I, in the next two, I put consider on these two because these two presentations were on the agenda this evening, so I wanted to make sure that you had the opportunity to look at those two presentations before we make commitments. So consider the Climate Action Committee's social mobilization campaign and consider the seven percent solution for GHG reduction strategy. So I just got some direction from the committee on the second one. The, the first one to commit, to consider the social mobilization campaign, I don't think there's a whole lot of risk in moving forward with that, continuing to work with the Climate Action Committee. And what I heard from the presentation is there's going to be a five-year implementation plan that comes along with that. So I think we can move that consider to work with the Climate Action Committee to continue that work. The next one is to complete the 2021 official community plan. Of course, that's a priority that we hope to have done before the end of the year. And I've got in here as a purpose to ensure that the OCP engagement and the advisory committee recommendations are considered by council. And the result of that, I really hope and I think we're on our way is to have an OCP that is widely supported within the community because of the engagement and the work of the committee that goes into that. The council value there is the community vibrancy. Talked a little bit about changing the criteria for secondary suites, so develop parking and wastewater criteria for suites. The purpose is to consider recommendations from the land use and development committee regarding approval of suites. And the result, it will be a fair and equitable approval enforcement framework for suites. Complete the alternative approval process for John Phillips Memorial Park lines called lease. You'll see the description and the result on the sheet. Work with the SUC region community health network to find alternative funding sources for Lot A. As we know, they did not get their B.C. housing grant. They have had a follow-up meeting with B.C. housing. They've been encouraged to apply for pre-development funding, so we will be speaking with B.C. housing on what that ultimately means. But they really want to see some further work done on the subdivision and the development permit application to knock away some of the barriers before they come forward with their next application for funding for the project. The second last now priority is to explore the public plaza partnership with Evergreen Shopping Center. As I said, right from the very beginning, access through the shopping center was a critical component of making sure that that development is all that it needs to be. So we'll continue to work with the shopping center on that access and those access agreements. And the final one is to complete an asset management investment plan. The purpose of that priority is to know the amount of funding that's required for renewal and replacement of our district assets. and replacement of our district assets. And the result, once we have that information, is depreciation of assets is funded in the annual budget. So again, this could be a significant budget item into our five-year financial plan if we get to the point where we are funding depreciation at 100%. So we'll have a look, we'll know what that looks like. We'll do some financial modeling on the practicality of funding 100% of depreciation. But it'll be a bit of an eye-opener for us to understand what that commitment should be if we're doing justice to asset management. There are four next objectives on the proposed July 2021 chart. Develop an annual planning and budget engagement plan. I spoke about this earlier. We really want to make this the focus of our annual planning and engagement for both internal and external communications and guarding against over-engagement and not engaging on everything, but making sure we engage on the most important things. The draft climate adaptation and mitigation strategy, you heard a lot about that this evening. The act and the SUNDY framework will be coming in early 2022. But we want to make sure that we're ready to quickly change our planning and our policy framework to align with the new act because there's going to be an awful lot of really good information on emergency planning, both from the pandemic, but also from climate change and the things that we're witnessing now with water shortage, wildfire, and those types of things. And then the make sure that our planning framework is up to date and that our up-to-date emergency plan has all of those elements that we will learn about. And the final one is to review the zoning and other bylaw recommendations that'll come from the OCP. So the official community plan will have recommendations on other policies like our land, our zoning policy and our development services bylaw that will need to be amended to align with the OCP. And I just want us to be ready to make sure that we're in a position to make those changes sooner rather than later. So it, because it will have an impact on the type of investment that developers bring to our community. So with that, I will leave you with the recommendation that the committee, the whole recommend that council approve the updates to the strategic priorities chart dated July 2021. And I'm sure you may have some recommendations for amendments before that happens.
Yes, so thank you very much, Mr. McInnes. I have been, there is a request for a health break, so I would like to take a recess, and we will reconvene the committee of the whole at nine o'clock according to the clock on the wall. So not your own devices, but the wall clock. Thank you. And we're live at nine o'clock. So welcome back, everyone. Thank you. And we will now resume our discussion following Mr. McInnes's presentation on our strategic priorities. I would just like to thank Mr. McInnes for the work that you're doing in keeping our strategic plan valid and current. That was really important to us when we adopted the plan in the first place. And I also appreciated what I heard about the quarterly reports from departments. It's something the district had a long time ago, and I'm glad that you're looking to reinstate it. I think what it does is it provides council and the public and even our staff with what's going on because there's a lot going on. And sometimes, you know, someone may ask like, oh, what about such and such? And what about such and such? And it's like, well, it's in this meeting, you know, go and check this block of agendas, and you'll find that. But having an actual quarterly report, you know, it's easier to say it's in the third quarter, first quarter. I think it may also help with, you know, we have more staff and more staff joining us in various roles, some obviously here in the room, some at home watching the webcast, I'm sure, and others that are just doing good work. But they also may want to know like what else is going on with the various departments. So in that way, it can also maybe help with internal communications, what's going on department to department, and then for counselors around the table. So part of the onus is on us to read the report and to look to it first instead of just what's happening with such and such when, you know, it's all in this quarter. So, you know, I really like how all of this is, and other than that, would support the recommendation as it's presented. So look to members of councils, questions for Mr. McInnes? Any comments? Counselor McMath?
I just wanted to say thank you because we're like a herd of cats. Sometimes we have big vision, but I so appreciate how you excel at giving us like timelines and reality checks and how it all ties in with our budget, our staffing. And so, very appreciated.
Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, I'd echo that as well. And I did circulate to council a few weeks back this idea of a task force on post-secondary education and the feasibility of such in SUUK. And, you know, and the logic being given the amount of commercial development coming to town and their need for anchor tenants, whether the time is right now to create this task force, it would involve pretty minimal staff time, perhaps a corporate service person to document what I would imagine to be just two or three meetings of a task force group. Now, you know, looking at this amazingly full and strategic plan, perhaps I should be bringing this forward as a notice of motion at some point, or?
I would suggest that it falls under the Community Economic Development Committee. So I would think that maybe it's a discussion point there to have with Counselor LaGenes and with that committee to see, because it just fits under that particular committee. So rather than sort of adding it this way, I think it needs to flow through that committee is where I would think it lands. I'm seeing kind of agreement, like.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, so off you go. Okay, okay.
Deal. Oh, yeah, sorry, Dana.
Yeah, but I think that's a natural fit, and you'll see that in that particular committee. There's some good resources. You could do a check-in to see where they're at, and I think that would, that would just work. Yeah, a good point, yeah. Counselor St. Pierre?
We had two items that just came up in terms of advocacy in some of the correspondence. And one of them was from Counselor Logan's around affordable housing and whether or not we want to do advocacy around affordable housing. The other one was my own, and that had to do with maybe getting in touch with the Ministry of Agriculture around looking at farm tax status again. And that specifically is a tool for economic development, enhancing food security and helping out with affordable housing. So wondering, is this something that we want to include at this point advocacy, or do we simply want to develop that further and look at it at a later point?
I think we should develop it further. Last year at UBCM, because the RIT dropped right at the start, all of the provincial policy sessions were yanked out, and we didn't hear that. So I think part of it this year, because the government will not be doing that this year, will get good updates. I think part of it is, let's hear what they have to say, what they come with, what is going to be announced over the course of the next, over the summer, say, and where it lands, and then we could pick it up there and see what comes out of the UBCM and then look to do that. In terms of my piece around advocacy, it was more because the opposition of the government had reached out asking to meet with local governments. So that's where I thought, okay, well, where are there, what are the government not doing that we feel is important? They have not flowed through cannabis revenue, for example, to local governments. And I want to ask the opposition parties, and I have already done this, where do you stand on this? And are you, are you going to advocate? So there's kind of those pieces. So that's where I think it's hearing that. I do have a meeting with search and representatives coming up because I want to understand why their project was not successful and what is missing there. Is it because we have two underway? My argument is it only took us, what, 15 years to get these two built? So we're still not there, even though they're under development now, they were approved years ago. So that's where I think we have some internal work that we should do as a council together. We're all attending UBCM as I understand it. So let's see where, what fits appropriately with the opposition, that's our job there. And then what pieces can we pick up afterwards? And then we don't need to just settle on the meetings that we have at UBCM, of which we're limited to three. We can follow up and then request meetings directly with the ministers responsible. And I suggest we do that in terms of the Minister of Agriculture. She was here in SUUK today, she knows where we're at and what's happening, and there's some other work there. But I think that should land with us.
Just to clarify, so we want to wait till after UBCM, once we know what sort of advocacy work is already happening and what information, what information has come out of the various So we can update our own advocacy plan at that point after seeing what happens. That's what's being recommended here?
Yeah.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, but some of it we've requested because we know we're going to need mental health supports. We're seeing that come out of COVID with the funding that, so it makes sense that these are not local government responsibilities, but it's falling on us to fund. So there's a problem there in that we can't fund them forever. They belong with the provincial government, so why aren't you funding things like prenatal care and counseling? Those aren't local government fundings. The food bank, yeah, okay, I can see that. But some of the other ones, no, like why are there holes here? And just hearing, oh, they can go to Victoria. No, that's not acceptable for our community to just go to Victoria to access these resources. So that's where, they've done acts, but we now need to hit, this is SUUK-specific now, and we need you to fund this. And this is how we can work together on those pieces. So those are sort of where we're heading. And then I have some health meetings, like here are the gaps still that, that we need more health services here. I get there's a physician and nurse shortage in the world, but still, here's what we need to make our clinic whole, and we can't rely on those services coming out from elsewhere. And then I think we have numerous grant applications out there right now. We have one for the homelessness coalition that we're waiting on an answer. If we don't get that funding, we need to know why we didn't get that funding. But that's where we may hear announcements soon, so let's see where those are at, and then we can crystallize it further. Okay, makes sense? So there's a recommendation then that the committee of the whole recommend council approve the updated council strategic priorities chart dated July 2021. Okay, moved by Counselor Logan's. So there's no second or, the other piece with the quarterly report that I hope we'll see there is grant application successful because I can't remember anymore. And then, like, what did we get? And then we don't want to talk about them because, yeah, so that'll be a good point to include. Thank you. Okay. Yes, go ahead on the motion.
Thank you so much, Norm and staff, for putting this all together and for following it so diligently. We would seriously be lost without it. And I remember looking over there and seeing our last one and from last term, and I'm really glad that there's a jiggly piece of art there instead. This is really, really great. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor, please? And that's carried unanimously. And corporate officer, I neglected to call for public input yet again. So I'm sorry, can you please just let me know if we have members of the public to speak on that?
We do not, nor do we have any for the remainder of the meeting.
Okay, so I'm safe. Thank you. We have no public remaining for the remaining item, okay? Okay, so the next one up is 8.2, proposed dog park in Ponds Park corridor. So we have the report here, I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, everybody. I'm just going to share my screen. Can you all see that?
We can, but we can also see your speaking notes, so if you have a way of putting it fully into presentation mode.
I've got too many screens. How's that?
It's still in, it's still in with your notes.
I'm just going to stop screen sharing and try again. Well, just a moment. Now I can't see the meeting.
We're still here and can see you.
You're muted, Jessica.
PowerPoint isn't opening just a mo, I'm sorry for the delay here.
That's okay.
It's not opening at all. There it is.
We are all just staring at you, but not, not to make you feel totally uncomfortable.
It's not opening. It's not.
Hey, Jess Ryan here. If you, if you turn off under, where it says slideshow, and then unchecked use presenter view, that will allow it not to show your notes.
The trouble is, we can't actually open PowerPoint at the moment.
Oh, that's amazing.
Sounds like it might need a reboot.
Yeah, I think it's possible. Okay, we've got it open. We don't want that one. You're just going to have to... Good evening, everyone.
Okay, we can see it now.
Can you see this slide presentation, or can you see my notes as well?
We can see your notes, but I think Ryan's got an option for you, I'll let him pipe in.
Okay, thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, under, or even under display settings up on the top, do you see in the black section?
Yeah.
No, to the left, 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 display settings?
Yeah.
So, there you go.
Yay, perfect.
Ryan, I didn't know you were here, and I'm very grateful for you.
So smart.
Okay, so you can all see the slideshow?
Yep, we're all good, thank you.
And here I was attempting to have a brief presentation, and I've taken up at least five minutes of your time sorting this out, my apologies. Good evening, everyone. As you now know, I am here this evening to present a plan and budget options for a fenced dog park in Ponds Park corridor, which reflects the public engagement that we conducted this spring. The Parks and Trails Master Plan, which you adopted October 13th, 2020, identifies a lack of dog off-leash areas as a key challenge in SUK, and it recommends that they become an area of focus. Outdoor recreation is constantly shifting based on demographic characteristics and societal changes, and one of the five key trends identified in the plan is to embrace dogs. Dog ownership is really high in SUK, and urban areas are being planned to recognize the social and physical benefits to people that come from embracing responsible uses by humans and their dogs. 62% of Parks and Trails Master Plan survey respondents own dogs, which yielded significant input related to dogs in parks and trails. This is consistent with a CRD study that estimated around 36% of households own dogs, with an average of 1.3 dogs in each of these households. There are an estimated 2,500 dogs in SUK. The Parks and Trails Master Plan, Action Plan, identifies Ponds Park corridor as a preferred dog off-leash area, and it suggested a budget of $50,000 to construct a fenced park. With the significant public engagement of the Parks and Trails master planning process informing this location, staff conducted site-specific community engagement from May 4th to June 4th of this year. The goal of the fenced dog park engagement was to inform neighboring residents and the community of the selected location to prioritize site amenities and to better understand concerns so that they could be mitigated and incorporated into the park design. A thorough compilation of what we heard can be read in the report attached to this agenda and is available on our website as well for the public. We heard from over 170 residents and heard, by and large, very good support for this project and its location. Elements that emerged as the most desirable features included a water fountain with a pet faucet, waste receptacles and bag dispensers, benches, a gazebo, natural agility features, and separating sections to accommodate high and low or small and large dogs, high and low energy or small and large dogs. We also heard that most residents would actually like to see the fenced area enlarged to accommodate a larger off-leash area. So this slide shows some examples of the design elements that we would like to include in the park design. Looking at the photos on this slide, sort of from left to right and then top to bottom, we have standard trailhead amenities that you see at our trailheads and parks, which include a bear-resistant garbage can, dog bag dispenser, and signage. Benches, black chain link fencing, which includes double gates for security, a gazebo for sheltering from sun and rain. So we picture sort of a post-and-beam style gazebo, the similar design to what we have with the map kiosk in John Phillips Park currently. And then we see incorporating natural agility features such as boulders and logs and trees. And lastly, but most importantly, is a water fountain with dog accessibility, like those currently at Whiffen Spit and in John Phillips Park. So we, we did also hear several concerns relating to the dog park and its locations, and I've addressed those concerns in the frequently asked sections of the report. And in the interest of time, I'm hoping that we can delve into any outstanding questions around those concerns in the discussion portion of this presentation. So taking into the account the feedback that we received, staff have prepared two budgets. So one is providing a bare bones facility using our existing budget of $36,500, and a second, which you'll see in a moment, incorporates most of the desired design elements that we heard from the public engagement, which would inquire an increase in budget. So this slide summarizes option one, which utilizes our current budget of $36,500, and essentially that allows us to put in the, the most important features being a water connection, so this wouldn't afford us a water fountain, but a standpipe so that a bucket, for example, could be filled, and that, that is something that works in some dog parks. And some surfacing and a trail connection from the park down to the Ponds Park corridor trail or to the Stickleback Trail. And then those basic trailhead amenities being the garbage can, waste receptacle, and signage. And lastly, with this budget, we could fence slightly smaller area, so 65 meters by 25 So in order to include the desired amenities and the larger size, which is what we heard from the feedback, staff is recommending that council allocate up to an additional $45,000 to the dog park budget from council contingency. This will afford the additional high priority items identified in the community engagement, such as that water fountain, benches, a gazebo, and natural agility features. A phased approach to the dog park could be taken, but budgeting for and planning to complete the work as one project will provide efficiencies and cost savings. Just as an important aside, and it's noted in the report for you, an additional request of the public engagement was a separated area for small and large dogs or low and high-energy dogs. And this was lower on the list of priorities and would cost approximately $10,000 to construct because it would require a second trailhead. So it's not included in this current budget, but it's possible that as the project develops and additional in-kind contributions arise, we may be able to possibly incorporate that. Either way, we will design the dog park so that in future, the secondary area could be easily added to the park. So a third option for you to consider, in light of the increased scope of the dog park, construction could be postponed and funding could be considered through the 2022 budget deliberations. So there's a third option. But in short, we really did hear SUK does need a dog park, and Ponds Park corridor has been identified in the Parks and Trails Master Plan as the preferred location, and the community would really like to see us build a flagship dog park that's well-appointed with the additional amenities that I discussed earlier. And therefore, staff are recommending that council authorize staff to proceed with the construction of a fenced dog park at 2276 Church Road, that council, and that council allocate up to an additional $45,000 to the dog park budget from council contingency. And thirdly, that council direct staff to ensure that special attention to dog, to the dog park location be addressed during the CRD Animal Control Services contract renewal in fall 2021. That's an item that I address in the frequently asked questions, and one of the pieces that can help us mitigate our bylaw and noise concerns with the park. So that ends my formal presentation, and I will hand it over to you for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Boquist. So questions or comments on the report? So you have in front, we have our PowerPoint presentation as well as the report back on what we heard, and a recommendation that has come forward through this, as well as previous council actions. So, open it up. Counselor Bateman?
Yeah, through to Ms. Boquist, a question. Is there an option to put up a temporary dog park for a, as one, one of the respondents who lives at 2270 Pond Place noted, perhaps a one-year trial basis? Is that a, so that the neighborhood can find out how challenging it might be?
Through your worship to Counselor Bateman, I actually did speak with a neighbor in the vicinity who, who did float the concept of a temporary park. But a temporary park, if it is to be fenced, would still require some basic infrastructure, and the fence being the big piece. So it would still at least cost upwards of $40,000 to fence that area to create a fenced dog park.
I'm curious if you're aware of, the District of San itch is currently exploring, spending $30,000 to set up five temporary off-leash dog areas this summer for, for testing purposes. These are pop-up dog parks, and they're going to last for two weeks each in various locations. So, yeah, that might be an option.
If there's fencing. It comes down to the fencing, so depending on where these areas are, I'm not sure. It's the fencing component is the challenge.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so I'll go to Counselor McMath and then to St. Pierre.
One of the concerns regarding the noise, I, I'm not really, I'm not worried about the daytime activity, but how are you managing the noise regulation at nighttime, and how are you preventing people from entering the park after hours?
So through your worship to Counselor McMath, there will be signage posted, and bylaw currently visits the park upwards of five times per week, and so the SUK bylaw enforcement will have a hand in helping us to do that community education. Currently, our parks regulation bylaw states that parks are only open dawn to dusk, so technically, the park will be closed every evening at sunset.
We both know, though, that that doesn't work. Like, for example, like Ed McGregor Park, people go down and harvest crab all the time illegally after hours. So is it possible to have the fencing raised and for parks to lock it after hours, or some sort of regulation that way?
Well, yes, that's, that's not something that we've investigated, and I'm not sure what the implication would be budget-wise if, if the park were to be locked.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor St. Pierre?
I just had a question through your worship to Ms. Gray, just in terms of what might be in council contingency, do we have the 45 grand in what would be left?
My phone, there is $76,000 currently left in council contingency, so there's sufficient funds for this project.
Perfect. Thank you for that.
So just for those viewing, we're hearing there's $76,000, so there are sufficient funds in the fund. Okay? Counselor Logan's?
Thank you for the report. It's great to have a bunch of options and to have a lot of backup research, which we've needed for all this time, to finally come to a decision on this. One question I have, and maybe it's in here, maybe it's not, but around signage, is, is there a plan to have signage like at the other end of the trail in, on Phillips Park to sort of lead people through that park to the dog park, just so that folks who may not be aware that it's there, who usually bring their dog to John Phillips, or who are bringing them there for the first time, can wander right through instead of having the dog play in John Phillips, that, which is what typically happens now?
So through your worship to Counselor Logan's, yes, we have plans to include the dog park in, in the wayfinding through, through the corridor, and it will be featured... dog park in the wayfinding through the corridor, and it will be featured in the map updates, should it be approved, all along the Stickleback Trail.
Thank you.
Counselor St. Pierre, then Beddows?
I was going to move the recommendation on the option to increase the funding by 45.
I'll come back to you, just so that we can just field out some more questions first. Counselor Beddows?
Yeah, to staff, I was down there yesterday with a dog, actually, and I engaged a couple of the neighbors who were out and about, one of which was fixing his fence. And he had no problem with the dogs, but he was concerned about the youth going in there at night, especially with the gazebo, and become a little bit of a drink fest. And I must say, I have that concern myself. I understand the gazebo, is it $10,000? Is that something that we can put the dog park in and, you know, put the gazebo at a later date if, when, if needed? That would eliminate that concern. If it's rainy, less likely, and a roof. So that's my concern. And the other concern is there's very little parking around there. There's only, I think there's about four, five spots on Church Road, and they seem to be full up with people living in some of the houses because I went there in two consecutive days and the same cars were there. So I do have a concern about parking. But I'm not concerned about the noise. I had a look at the area and I don't think it'd be very noisy. I did talk to somebody in the parking lot today that had two big dogs, Labs, and he says he wouldn't use it because it's far too small for running his dogs. And then I was accosted by two huge dogs in the park, and the little dog that I was, little spaniel, I wasn't so concerned about the big dogs, but didn't know how my spaniel was going to react to these two things charging up to them. So the main concern is the gazebo. I think we could shelve the gazebo, save $10,000. And I'm not so sure about the fountain as well. I mean, there's another $10,000 saving there. If we got the standpipe there, we could always do that at a later date. My concern is, is it needed and is it adequate? And I was really quite surprised going down that area, how few people there were. I met three people walking their dogs, and I'm not sure it's going to be used that much, but I don't know. You did the research on it, and I'll certainly take your word for it. But I'm not in favor of the gazebo. I think that can come at a later date when and if it's needed. Thanks.
Counselor Logan?
I completely agree. I don't particularly want the gazebo there. One, because it saves us $10,000, and two, because I don't 100% see the purpose. I do also agree with the standpipe over the fountain. Personally, my dog doesn't drink out of the fountains. He finds them weird for some reason, but he's special. But please, Counselor Beddows, I don't want this to be a council that supports negative stereotypes of SUK youth drinking in public spaces.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood that. What was the point there?
Oh, saying that the concern was that SUK youth are going to be drinking in another public space. I don't think we should be supporting that stereotype at council.
Well, I'm sorry, but that's what the neighbor concern was, and I brought it to council, which is my job, so.
I know that. I completely understand that. I just hope that in the future, you're able to have a conversation with that person about that stereotype and why it's not true of youth in SUK and that perhaps it's the case where people will be drinking in there, but any people can be drinking in there. I don't want to drink in a place where dogs are peeing, but I understand that. But I do completely agree, and those are the two points I was going to bring up, is that the standpipe would be my preference and the gazebo not being there would be my preference, and that brings our budget to, or the total project to 61,500.
Counselor St. Pierre? Microphone.
I'd like to ask further question at this point. The standpipe, is this something that a human can drink out of? Because it doesn't sound like it.
Well, my understanding is that there's the water line, so it would be a water fountain like we have at Whiff and Spit that allows for, that hydrates both humans and four-legged creatures.
That would be the fountain, I believe. But a standpipe, that sounds a little more primitive, possibly lower to the ground. A desperate human could probably drink from it, most likely, but no, I'm getting head shakes. Sounds like not good.
So question is, like, does the water, is it, like, what is it? Is it a water fountain or is it just for the dogs?
So through your worship to Counselor St. Pierre, if you're familiar with the standpipe that's down in John Phillips Park next to the outhouse, it's about two or three feet out of the ground, and it has a blue handle that's lockable. And I mean, if you wanted to fill your water bottle with it, you certainly could. I've seen them in other dog parks in our region, and usually when there's a standpipe, a hydrant style faucet, there's just a bucket, and then dog park users fill buckets for the dogs to drink from. Whether people want to fill their bottles and drink from it, that's their call. It would be potable water.
Thank you. That's perfect. So someone with a water bottle, which is most people, honestly, could actually fill up and get water. That's good. Because one of my dreams is that we actually have water available in parks so that people can actually use them and actually hydrate, especially with heat. It just makes sense. In terms of the gazebo, I just had a comment that during the pandemic, we had a lot of people that wanted to use outdoor space, and we were unhappy that we had so few spaces with covered areas. I'm wondering if it's something we want to reconsider just on that basis, because we're likely to have more events, more times when outdoor recreation spaces where people can actually make better use of our park amenities would be appreciated.
We don't have a motion on the floor, so.
No, we're just discussing this right now, but it's been brought up. Shall we remove this? Shall we not? And I'm just putting forward that recently, we've had a need.
Yes.
And this is an opportunity. So I'd like people to just consider it. Don't have to, but you can.
Excellent. Thank you. Turn off your microphone. Okay, so my comments on this are that I liked the gazebo. I thought that you could use some shade. You could sit and watch the dogs play or not. I agree with Counselor Logan's that we, people sometimes drink in, all over SUK. I wouldn't say that it's youth, though, when it's, I think it's mostly older people. And that is an issue, but that happens all over the place. I don't know that a gazebo would attract that element into a dog park, that that would be the place. I think that the use of it will depend on the dog, quite frankly. Some dogs are very social and like to play with other dogs, and other dogs are not as social and like to play with only a few dogs or not. So it really depends. There is a lot of density in here, so it's an opportunity for folks to get out and socialize their dogs. And I think that's one thing that I've sort of seen in the paper, I think, on interviews with vets, where a lot of COVID puppies have come into homes and they need to be socialized. And that's what this provides, is a safe place to socialize. And it has to be fenced. I like the thought into the double gates and the maintenance piece. I agree, though, that something that everyone could use, so whether you're filling a water bottle for yourself, or your water bottle for your dog, or a bucket for your dog, that would be great, just to have another option available there. And, and yeah, some dogs bark and some don't. Like, it really, and some dogs make other bark and some don't at all. It's just the way it is. But they are 2,500 of them and growing. And this came to council, just for background from the public, the public petition, and this is where I like Mr. McInnes's comment on the five years and getting things rolling in because everything takes time to realize. So there was a petition that came from dog owners about needing a safe place to exercise their dog. And that was back in 2012. There was like a dog task force made up of counselors that went out and looked at all the parks. And it was around the time that we were also addressing the need for a bike park, a horseshoe park, a plane park, and dog park. So it was all kind of in that order, order, order. And the Ponds Park was identified as a good location for this. So then the bike park, as we know, was found as permanent home at Sea Park. The horseshoes got realized and done at Suk River, and then that left the dogs as an outstanding one. So that's where, even when I reached out to the person who brought the petition forward, she was just so fed up with waiting for so long that, you know, just didn't think it would ever happen. So here we are, and I think that's what's before us. So Counselor Lajones, I think you have a comment, and then I'll look to, or pardon me, Counselor Bateman again, and then I want to look to move a motion. So Counselor Lajones.
Yeah, initially, I was going to say that I don't like to do anything kind of in a hokey manner, but I think by roughing in, get the plumbing in place, put a standpipe in, we can always add a fancy fountain later. And the same could be said for the gazebo, something that could be added. But get the fencing in and the other rocks and logs or whatever needs to be there, and give the people the park. They've been asking for it for 10 years, and I think we should just do it.
Counselor Bateman?
Through you to staff, I'm curious, there were 107, I think, total surveys received, and you've stated 15% expressed strong opposition. Is it safe to assume that that 15% is geographically located right at the Ponds Corridor?
Through your worship to Counselor Bateman, we don't know the exact location of all of the survey respondents, but in our conversations with park users doing in-person engagement, certainly the only strong opposition that we encountered were immediate neighbors. But having said that, some of our strongest support was also coming from immediate neighbors.
Ah, interesting. Okay, and that 15% does include the signatures on the petition? Is that true?
No, the 15% is survey respondents, and the petition would have been accounted for separately.
Right. So that was 68 signatures from 46 households.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McMath?
I just wanted to address the letter that we received in our supplemental agenda. This resident speaks about how they provided their contact information, how they sent correspondence, which wasn't included, and then they've sent this one as well. I share some of her concerns. My first question through your worship is to Jessica. Do you recall that person leaving their contact information, and do you have an idea of how it would have gotten missed?
Through your worship, through your worship, I did see the correspondence between Christina and that resident today, and her correspondence came through the front desk, and it was just sort of clerical error that it didn't get included in our final spreadsheet. I'm not sure. It happened at the front desk, is my understanding.
Okay. And then on that thread, same thing with the other letters that they've sent. And this isn't the first time that we've had this comment made to us, where pieces that have been submitted to the front desk haven't made it to us here. And so then, through your worship to staff, how is that being mitigated or dealt with?
So.
Sorry, I can speak to that, Ms. Boquist.
Thank you.
Through your worship to Counselor McMath, when items do come in through info, if they are, not everything is circulated to council unless it is addressed to Maran Council. So if something is department-specific, it is forwarded, sometimes accomplished through a call for service or just a general response from staff, but.
So specifically for people coming into the office and dropping off stuff, because it was like Karen Mason from Chamber of Commerce had dropped off a package at front desk and ultimately didn't make its way here. It's a piece of this.
Okay, so I need to rule on, when there's a point of order, I need to rule on it. So what I'm hearing here is more of an internal, like, just how is this piece going to that? And we have a resident now whose piece hasn't been picked up properly. We have this letter here, but I'll just ask.
Yeah, I mean, I couldn't speak specifically to this without going back to research, but I do recall several pieces coming in that were included, and then a note was put on it that it was being forwarded to Parks for inclusion in the survey results. But again, without researching this particular piece, I couldn't say exactly why or what happened to it. Okay.
And through your worship to Counselor McMath, unfortunately, it was too late for us to add her letter to the report that you've received, but it's been added to the report that's available online. And we have written to her to apologize for the error.
Okay, so we have a recommendation here, and I'll read it out, that council authorized staff, or that the committee of the whole recommend to council, that council authorize staff to proceed with the construction of a fenced dog park at 2276 Church Road, that council allocate up to an additional $45,000 to the dog park budget from council contingency, and that council direct staff to ensure that special attention to the dog park location be addressed during the CRD Animal Control Services contract renewal in fall 2021. So Counselor St. Pierre has moved that. So speaking on the motion, Counselor St. Pierre.
I think that we've been over this for 10 years. We need the dog park. We have the money in contingency. We should do something nice and make it happen as fast as possible.
Okay, an amendment. Counselor Logan, go ahead, please.
It may not be friendly, but I'm trying to get away with it anyway. Can we do each of them separately?
Yep, so that's a motion to sever, so we can do that. I can entertain severing them. I can do that as chair, right? Ooh, you can challenge me, and we can go through a vote, but I'm severing them all anyway. So let's start then on this. Did I see another hand? They're severed now, so we're going to start, break them down, and we'll start with the first one, and that is that council authorized staff to proceed with the construction of a fenced dog park at 2276 Church Road. So that is the first item that's moved that's up. Counselor McMath? Well, it's already moved. He's already, he's moved it, so it's on the floor. It's now been broken up, so it doesn't need to be moved again. He says it's already been discussed, so now I'm just looking for others who wish to discuss this particular piece of the motion. Anything from anyone? Counselor Bateman?
I won't be able to support this for a number of reasons, but I think the primary one that comes to mind is that I feel something like this is, it requires a public hearing here in person. And given as fine a job as the communications staff have done in reaching out and seeking public input, it remains a significant impact on this pocket neighborhood. And as much as I'm in favor of a fenced dog park, they are remarkably rare in the CRD. My wife and I went to one on Saturday, and it was filled with happy dogs and happy people. And it looks like, you know, it's absolutely, we've identified the need. However, to jump into this one here and now, at the end of a COVID year with limited public engagement, I know for a fact that we would have a full chamber here tonight. And yeah, so on those grounds, I won't be able to support this.
Okay, that's fine. Counselor Beddows?
Just a point of clarifications. I mean, taking from what Counselor Bateman says, is there an opportunity to table this until September?
That's also an option. I don't know for a fact that the council would be changed, would be full on this particular item or on any item, but there is always, council always has that ability to do that.
Yeah, you struck a chord there. I thought that's not a bad rationale.
Counselor McMath?
We've identified that it's a decade in the making, that it came from the community up. We have the money. So I think when we discussed earlier about engaging and over-engaging, we are conduits for the community, so we should, this isn't something we should go back on our table any further. I think we know where the majority stands, so we should just move forward with the project.
I'll also add that this does go to regular council to be ratified, of which there is still another week of receiving emails, of messaging out, of inviting people to join still another week of receiving emails, of messaging out, of inviting people to join in on teams, to drop off other letters. Like, there still is a week out opportunity on this. My concern with bumping this to the fall is that we have a lot of demands on our staff and items that we really need to hear. I mean, I'm not saying we don't need to hear from the public this, on this, but we have a lot of business that we need to get through. So part of it is that as well, on getting through some of the amenities that are growing community needs. Counselor?
Yeah, through your worship, if, for instance, it's going to come back to us for the next meeting, we could also determine to table it then, if there's a ground swell of opposition and do want it. So I'm, I'm inclined to pass it at this stage, and, but I do take what Counselor Bateman says with great interest, and I'll wait and see what happens next meeting.
Yeah, so you can, exactly that. Council can do that exact thing. Okay? So I will call the question on the first piece. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Counselor Bateman is opposed. The motion carries. The next piece is that council allocate up to an additional $45,000 to the dog park budget from council contingency. So this has been moved. It's here on the floor for discussion. So I heard some comments about not doing the fountain or the water feature, the, the thing, the standpipe, and not doing the budget or the gazebo. And I hear that. However, for me, I, I would say, just get this over, please. Like, if we're going to do this, let's do it well, and let's move on to the next project. I was pleased to see the community association is contributing $10,000 in funding. There is a major problem on the ball fields with a lot of dog remains on that field. That becomes a problem, because the dogs, you know, they're there, and now you have kids and others that are actually showing up to recreate, but they have to do poop patrol first. And you miss something, it's really unpleasant to step in. So, you know, I, I was pleased to see that commitment there. And that's where I thought I read somewhere else, I just closed it, that, that there may be opportunity to seek out other funding. I mean, if that is the case, and we have an ability to do that, I always recommend that, of course. But it's a case of, we need to just move on and get going. I mean, I'm hearing now of, of interest in more play equipment at Broom Hill Park and this, like, there's just a list. So just move on. That's where I'm at. Let's get it all done, move on to the next project. So I will not support removing any items. They need to go in. Let's just do it and get her over with. That's where I'm at. Other comments? Counselor Lajones?
Yeah, I guess the, the only reason that I was suggesting that we could rough in the, the fountain now and then maybe budget for it next year is that we're, we have 75K left in council contingency, and if we're going to burn 45K, that only leaves us 30. And we're not quite, well, we're just halfway through the year, so we don't quite know what's going to come up yet. We may, may need some of that money.
In which case, we can do a budget amendment from another project if needed, and we'll see. If it's a priority, then we'll find the funding. If it isn't, then it'll wait to '22. If it's uncertain, then we're going to appeal for another type of fund. And if we have to go to COVID relief funds because something fits, we'll do so in that way. That's just my answer to that. Counselor Bateman, then Logans?
Yeah, sure. So I will vote in favor of this, now that we have voted to proceed with the construction of a fenced dog park. Thank you.
Counselor Logans, then Beddows?
I hear you, Madam Mayor, and I respectfully disagree. I, I, I'm totally okay with never, ever having a gazebo in the dog park. I just feel like it's another thing for them to pee on. And, and as for the fountain, water fountain, I can be sold either way on that one.
Can we add a fire hydrant to the dog park? A shiny red one. Counselor Beddows?
Yeah, I'm okay, especially with the idea that this is coming back goose again. So I, I have no problem with proceeding with the big-ticket item of everything. And again, when it comes before us in a week's time, if there's a ground swell of opposition to it, we can change your mind, we can table it, we can do anything. But I have to agree, let's get on with it, let's get it on the table, and see what happens with it. If there's nobody, like, I'm surprised very few people called tonight, maybe it's not a big issue. I don't know.
Anything else? Call in the question. All in favor? And any opposed? Counselor Logans and McMath are opposed. The motion carries. The next part is that council direct staff to ensure that special attention to the dog park location be addressed during the CRD Animal Control Services contract renewal in fall 21, 2021. Has been moved? Seems straightforward. Anything from anyone? All in favor? Any opposed? Unanimous on that? Okay, so we, we're moving on, and we'll see what, there's still time, again, to the viewing public. We want to hear from you. If you have concerns, please email council@suuk.ca and info@suuk.ca. We look forward to your comments. It's very important. As for now, we're moving on with the dog park. Okay, at this point, I see that there is no new business, so I will call for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by Counselor McMath. There is no secondar, no debate on this. I'm calling the question. All in favor? None opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you and good evening. Good night.